It is, yeah. The third, I'm sorry about the confusion on the eighth.
We're going.
Just walking out there. Then this is just where you know comes up. Yeah, I just wanted to use it. I'll give it back if you get. Sorry, watching. All right, very nice. These are your answers. Thank you very much.
Okay, it is five o'clock. I'd like to welcome you all to the City of Victorville Planning Commission meeting for August thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. I'll call this meeting to order, and can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas is absent, Vice Chair Messon is absent, and Chair Kirk.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Next, if you'll please please rise for the invocation, that'll be led to us by Commissioner Marshall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Marsh.
Okay, heavenly universe, I would ask that you please grant us the wisdom this evening to consider all the items at hand with the wisdom and the patience that you may call for. Amen.
Please face the flag and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up on the agenda is our general public comments. This would be a time for the public to speak to the commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. I understand we have at least one.
That's correct. Our first speaker is Carlos Rodriguez.
Welcome.
Yes. Good evening. Chairman and fellow commissioners, Carlos Rodriguez, Chief Policy Officer for the Building Industry Association of Southern California. We respectfully request the planning commission bring forward an agenda item for your September meeting to permit the limited use of vinyl fencing within track boundaries, specifically side yard and rear yard fencing as part of a twenty four month pilot program. This program would not eliminate block walls for new communities. Block walls would still be required along the perimeter of the community's street facing walls and front yard returns. This is a narrow targeted change focused on flexibility and good planning. Vinyl fencing is the industry standard for residential communities across Southern California, including neighborhoods with homes priced at one point five million and up to two million dollars. For Victorville, we propose an enhanced hybrid product with steel reinforced posts, concrete footings, and the strength to withstand wind speeds over a hundred miles per hour. It also includes UV protection, weathering performance, and will not rust, rot, or splinter, or require painting, ensuring long term aesthetic appeal and low maintenance for homeowners. Our the product also carries a twenty year warranty and includes a metal barrier underground to prevent pets from digging out and enhancing public safety. From a planning perspective, this proposal allows the city to test a high quality proven product while maintaining community design standards. It also would reduce construction costs by six to thirteen thousand dollars per home, giving builders greater flexibility to reinvest those savings into incentives that improve affordability and help more families achieve homeownership in Victorville. We believe this pilot program is innovative. Its balanced approach maintains visual consistency, enhances durability, improves homeowner satisfaction, and supports the city's goals of increasing attainable housing. We ask for your support this evening to move this forward for consideration at the September meeting and putting it on the agenda. We would hope in the meantime, in adding it to the agenda, we'd have the opportunity to schedule some a tour. So you can see the vinyl fencing for yourself, to work with you, your fellow commissioners and staff to bring this forth in a staff report for a good, robust deliberative discussion. We appreciate the opportunity for your consideration tonight. We urge your support to put it on the agenda in September, and thank you so much for your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Chung.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are here today to obviously revisit a topic that we last presented to you about three years ago, allowing vinyl fencing in new home development in this rear and side yards. At that time, the product was advanced has been advanced even further, and its performance has been thoroughly time tested. We have over twenty five years of experience installing vinyl fencing in our communities with no service issues. This is not theory, it's reality. We've used vinyl in the majority of our projects, including the million dollar to two million dollar projects that Carlos had alluded to in Torrance and Simi Valley. Even in the challenging high wind environment of the Antelope Valley, we successfully installed vinyl for over two decades without problems. This is a superior product that delivers durability, low maintenance, and lasting, sorry, lasting curb appeal. To address the concerns raised by council, planning commission, and staff in the past, we went back to the drawing board. We'd like to the opportunity just to present our version of this enhanced vinyl fence engineered specifically for the Victorville market. And these upgrades go above and beyond the standard product, ensuring the highest performance for local conditions. So it is no secret that housing affordability is on everyone's mind. Builders across the board are cutting prices, offering larger incentives, and providing rate buy downs. For example, Lennar has been offering incentives to up to thirteen percent of the house costs. By allowing vinyl fencing in place of block walls, we can save thousands of dollars per lot, savings that can be passed directly to home buyers or used to maintain competitive pricing. Every dollar matters when families helping families achieve homeownership. We're proposing this twenty four month pilot program so you can see the results for yourselves. This is a low risk opportunity to test the enhanced final product in our upcoming communities and confirm that it meets the city's standards for quality, durability, and aesthetics, all the while improving house attainability. Vinyl fencing is stronger, better, and more resilient than ever before, and it has been proven over decades in demanding climates and in high value communities. We are confident this pilot program will demonstrate that it can serve Victorville homeowners just as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Durham.
Welcome.
Everybody, my name is Mike Durham. I don't know if I will be as eloquent as the group prior to me, but I'm the Vice President of Operations for LGI Homes. And I just would reiterate what was said. Vinyl fencing is a standard in our business. In the city of Victorville, we just came off of building one hundred and eighty one homes at Desert Willa Village, all block. One of the hardships we've been facing is affordability. I mean, it's no secret, like Jennifer had spoken about it. We've hit the price ceiling in many capacities. I think about when I bought my first home, I paid eighty five thousand dollars and was scared to death over it, where the median house price these days is five hundred thousand dollars, which could be painful for anybody on top of people looking to buy a home in affordability. So vinyl fencing is something we do on a day to day. So what we use everywhere, we've been using it for years. I come from a building background, worked for a company called Pulte Homes for fifteen years, and that was our standard. Product's been around forever, it's not debatable, it's it's a great product. What we're asking for is consideration to use it here in Victorville, which, as Jennifer had mentioned, it's going to help out from an affordability standpoint. We're doing everything we can to get buyers in, including paying down points for interest rates these days, paying closing costs, whatever we have to do to help people get into the door and still continue the business. But this is an aspect that is an alternate product that we use on an ongoing everywhere else that provides benefit, and part of that benefit is the cost piece as well. But great quality product, I have no problems putting it in my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Cavassos.
Good evening, my name is Rick Cavassos. I work for one of the major fence companies that work with all the builders locally. And I'm here to provide my support for the builders as far as my experience in installing the vinyl fencing. And working with them, they've actually gone above and beyond. Well, it's a very good product, even in standard eight foot on center with no reinforcements, seventy mile an hour wind loads. They designed something that would shorten up the on centers, add steel into the posts and into the rail, and then we went ahead and helped them out with calculations, and we get it up to ninety five to one hundred and ten mile an hour wind loads. I've been in fencing since nineteen ninety nine and primarily installed as an installer of vinyl fencing. I've never replaced a vinyl fence for anybody, whether it's a homeowner or for the new builders. For me, it's a great product. I think they're they got something that's going to help them out. And if you guys need any information, I can answer some questions on anything else, and I got a copy of the structurals for that. If you guys want to see that, I thank for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elon Feingold.
Dear distinguished planning commissioners and staff, my name is Elon Feingold. I'm the VP of Operations for Pacific Communities. I think Jen, Carlos, and Rick did a great job explaining everything on the vinyl fence in terms of aesthetics and durability. I want to stress the issue of affordability one more time. As you know, affordability in California has hit record low. The average saving per lot when going vinyl versus block is on average ten thousand dollars. That could be the difference from a lot of our prospect homeowners from being able to buy a home and not being able to buy a home. At the current project in Victorville that we developed called Jasper, we now offer up to thirty thousand dollars for buying down the rate so we can have more affordability for home buyers. But even that is not enough for some of them, and they cannot attain homeownership. This cost savings that we can later on bring to our buyers by reducing the rate is crucial to get more affordability and home buying ability for new homeowners in Victorville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no additional speakers.
No one else, okay. Then I'll go ahead and I will close the general public comments. We just heard from the individuals on this fencing, and although this is not an agendized item right now, we cannot deliberate, discuss, or question anything on this. However, they did make a request to give us a presentation, I believe, at the next meeting, which would then need to go on the agenda. I'm under the feeling that I'd be okay with that, assuming if the rest of the commission is. And if they are, would the process be a vote to to allow that to go on to the next agenda for a presentation?
That is correct, Mr. Chair, a vote would be necessary to agendize something by a majority of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Is does anybody want to make a motion to allow them to come on?
Mr. Chair, if I may, if that is the path forward, I know the request is for a I just want to be clear on the request because what was presented here tonight was to to bring an item forward at next meeting. However, with our required twenty day noticing guidelines to notice a code amendment, my recommendation should that be the path forward of the planning commission would be, as you noted, to have a discussion slash presentation of the item at the next regularly scheduled meeting in September, and then from there, the planning commission would determine if there was any actionable items or requests from staff.
Regarding code amendment or anything.
Correct.
At that point, which we don't even know until we see the presentation, okay. So all right, do you guys, and if so, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Chair Kirk.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and so just as a clarification, they will be able to bring it will be on the next agenda, which would be, what would that be? September tenth is the next regular meeting, and they would be able to give an agendized presentation at that point with discussion and dialogue. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Then that moves us on to, you're welcome, moves us on to a set of three sets of minutes we need to deal with. These minutes were from May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, June eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, and July ninth, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May. Is it May fourteenth, June eleventh, and July ninth of two thousand and twenty five?
Second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall.
Aye.
Chair Kirk.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to our first public hearing item, which is item number two. And unfortunately, on this item, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this item due to a conflict of interest as I receive payment from the applicant for performing professional services not associated with this with this proposal. So with that, I will have to leave the dais.
Due to Chair Kirk having to recuse himself, we have lost quorum. We will now move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission, item three.
Yes, thank you. Yep, we're ready for item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of planning commission. Item number three is plan case number P L A N twenty four dash zero 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 two zero. It is a tentative track map with a mitigated negative declaration that allow for the development of thirty two single family lots on four undeveloped parcels totaling approximately ten acres and zoned R one single family residential. The project is located south of the intersection of Tanya Ridge Lane and Ferndale Road and encompasses parcels on both the east and west side of Ferndale Road. The proposed tentative track map meets all the development standards of the R one single family residential zone district, including minimum lot sizes, usable areas, and dwelling unit density. In addition, the proposal is consistent with the established character of the existing and surrounding neighborhood. As proposed, no lots are less than seventy two hundred square feet. As proposed, no lots are less than seventy-two hundred square feet with an overall density of approximately three point two dwelling units per acre. And access to the site will be provided through Ferndale Road and Chester Avenue. The proposed map includes a design in accordance with the R one single-family residential zone district and the Single Family Design Guideline, which incorporates elements such as multipurpose basin, avoidance of through streets, and enhanced landscaping. In addition, landscaping area areas will be provided along Tony Ridge Lane that will include returns at the local roadway entries to create a landscape entry feature. And with that, staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following action. Adopt adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the project, and adopt resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero one nine, approving tentative tract map case number P L A N twenty-four dash zero 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 two zero, subject to attached conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that staff report? Okay, not seeing none, then I will open up the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards?
We have no speaker cards.
Okay. If there's no one here to speak on this item, then I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the commission for a determination.
I'll make a motion to ad- to adopt item number, agenda item number three according to staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Aye.
Chair Kurt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That moves us on to item number four. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. Item number four is case number P L P L A N twenty-four dash zero 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 two one, which is a request for a site plan modification to previously approved case number P L A N twenty-one dash zero 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 one two, which authorized the development of a seven thousand three hundred and eighty-square-foot auto-zone retail store on a one-point-three-acre parcel located north of and abutting Mojave Drive, just west of Elavato Road. While the original project was deemed categorically exempt under SEQA Section one five three three two for infill development, a subsequent biological survey identified a Western Joshua tree within the footprint of the proposed retail building. Because the tree cannot be preserved in place, the applicant is required to obtain an incidental take permit from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. This change triggers the need for the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration as the original SEQA exemption no longer applies. The site plan modification serves to ensure SEQA compliance and formally incorporates the required mitigation measures. Importantly, the site plan and proposed development remain largely unchanged from the original approval. The project site is part of a larger development at the prominent northwest corner of Mojave Drive and Elavato Road, comprised of four parcels. An adjacent fueling station to the east, which is part of this overall development, is currently under construction and will provide auto-zone access to Elavato Road three connected rear drive aisle. A condition for reciprocal access between the two parcels, the four parcels of the overall development has been included in the associated resolution for this project. Auto-zone will additionally have access to Mojave Drive provided by two shared drive aisles. The original building elevations that the planning commission reviewed in the original site plan, Q Plan twenty-one dash zero 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 twelve, did not meet the city's commercial design guidelines as it lacked adequate color variation and wall articulation and required revised elevations to be provided prior to building permit issuance. The updated elevations included in this site plan modification case retain the stone veneer wainscot and neutral color palette, but now include darker accent colors for visual depth, decorative cornice treatments at the parapet, metal trellis features for landscaping to break up blank stucco walls. These enhancements improve the building's architectural quality and better align with the city's design standards. The proposal generally complies with Title sixteen landscaping requirements. Planters are distributed throughout the parking area. Multiple twelve-inch box trees are proposed, and an oversized landscape planner is located along the site's frontage. A condition from the first site plan approval has carried over to require to require vertical landscaping features such as climbing vines on the new tre- metal trellis features or the planting of Italian cypress trees to break up some of the otherwise blank stucco wall surfaces. Though this project has been in plan check with the building department since its original entitlement approval, which was stalled due to the issue with the onsite Joshua tree, a complete and code-compliant landscape plan is still outstanding and must be approved prior to permit issuance. As outlined in the staff report for this item, staff would like to make note that during the typical noticing process for this project, three response letters were received from various local agencies, including Burtex, Southwest Gas, and the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District, as well as two responses from tribal governments. Applicable comments have been incorporated into the project resolution as conditions of approval, including the requirement for a code-compliant trash enclosure, project adherence to fugitive dust best management practices, requirements for MDA-QMD permits for utilization of certain types of equipment during project construction, and conditions related to the discovery of cultural resources during the project's construction. In summary, this site plan modification ensures SEQA compliance through the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and updated conditions of approval. The proposed development remains consistent with the original approval and aligns with the zoning design and development standards of the city of Victorville. Staff recommends that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions. Adopt the associated mitigated negative declaration with a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the project, and adopt resolution number P dash twenty-five dash zero one eight, approving the site plan modification case number P L A N twenty-four dash zero 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 two one, subject to the attached conditions of approval. Staff remain available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Any questions of staff? No, thanks. I'll open up the public hearing on on this agenda item number four. Do we have any cards?
We have no speaker cards.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to us tonight on this one? Okay, I will close the public hearing on number four. I'll bring it back to the commission for determination.
I'll make a motion to adopt Agenda Item number four according to staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Aye.
Chair Kurt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That is passed. Then that moves us on to number five, some new business. It's a, I think, just an overview report on Assembly and Senate bills.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the commission. Agenda item number five provides a synopsis of Assembly Bill one thirty and Senate Bill one thirty-one, which were approved by Governor Newsom on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and when became effective immediately. These bills together make major changes to both the California Environmental Quality Act and California Housing Law. This includes items such as new SEQA exemptions, updated housing streamlining requirements, and building code implementation standards. Within this report to the planning commission, the focus of staff's assessment was to provide a brief explanation of those topics that will impact future planning commission reviews and approvals while refraining from analyzing those portions of the bills that do not directly impact the planning commission's review items. Some examples of those items that were not included in our synopsis are things such as litigation, streamlining, coastal commission procedures, water and sewer system exemptions, homeless shelter safety reporting requirements, and funding for homeless services, state funding for homeless services. Just a few examples of the types of items that were not included because generally those items will become come before the planning commission for review. With that, to highlight some of the some of the bills that we noted in our attachment and in our synopsis, I won't review all of them, but I think for the purpose of this meeting, it's important to go over the ones that you'll likely see in the coming months and years. First, the infill housing exemption. This exemption to SEQA will basically allow any housing development on a project site of less than twenty acres to be considered exempt from SEQA. There are some parameters, though, that it has to meet. Number one, it has to be next to development within a quarter mile of the site or abutting the site on seventy-five percent of its sides. It has to be at least fifteen units per acre in density. It has to comply with the underlying zone district, and it cannot be habitat for protected species. So a good example of that in this case would be a project site that maybe met all those criteria but had a Joshua tree on it, would not be eligible to utilize that category, that SEQA exemption. Another one of note is rezoning consistent with the housing element. Some municipalities deal with a lot of public output and outcry over rezoning that was required as their housing element. As you may recall, we recently updated our zoning code, introduced mixed-use zones that go up to thirty units per acre, rezoned the R four or re-designated the R four districts without thirty units per acre. Some communities, these are very contentious updates. We luckily didn't have that issue, but this allows cities to find those projects and those zoning updates exempt from SEQA to take away any kind of challenge due to SEQA with those zones. So if it's a housing element mandated pro- housing element mandated program that the state requires, then it can be considered exempt from SEQA as it relates to your zoning ordinance update. Another interesting exemption is the near-miss SEQA streamlining exemption. Essentially, what this exemption does, it's not a complete exemption in the true sense where the entire project would be exempt. However, if a project, we can, I guess, reference the infill housing exemption. Let's say a project met the twenty-acre threshold, met the density threshold, met the threshold of development on all four sides, but did have Joshua tree on site. In that case, they would still have to go through an initial study and mitigate a neg deck likely. However, that review of that study would be limited to only that item that didn't make it eligible for the SEQA exemption. So in a case like that, the the initial study would essentially focus solely on the biological resources. It wouldn't bring up greenhouse gas. It wouldn't bring up transportation because those things are not subject to any of the exemption allowances. So a very unique one, it can be used in all the SEQA exemptions. That seemed like a very appropriate one to tie it to because it's referenced in this in this in one of these bills as well. But that's a unique change that the state made for their exemptions. Another one, small lot subdivisions, remainder parcel allowed. I highlight this one only because we'll have a code amendment coming before you soon regarding SB nine and SP six eighty-four regarding small lot subdivisions. At the time of our new business item on this, at the last meeting of the planning commission, our senior planner, Ms. Cal- Mrs. Cal Sock, he noted that there's recent changes, and this is one of those changes, that essentially now in those small lot subdivisions, a remainder parcel that has a home on it can be included in that. Remainder parcels aren't counted towards the overall ten lots that could be created with the SB six eighty-four development. Essentially, it becomes eleven lots. It's just one's called a remainder and not a numbered lot. So that's a unique one that was added. And lastly, there's a building code update pause. This one is is unique in that residential building codes will be delayed. There'll be no allowances to update or adopt new residential building codes as they relate to residential development until June first of two thousand thirty-one. So it locks in those building codes for developers so they're they know the rules of the game as they proceed. With that, this item was presented for information and update purposes only, so there is no recommendation at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from that presentation from the commission? Go ahead.
Just wanted to thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
I had, I was just curious on the on the freezing of the building codes. How long, how often are those building codes updated from the state generally?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a triennial cycle, so every three years.
Every three, okay.
They'll they'll allow them to update the commercial building codes and the other building codes as they don't relate to residences and dwelling units. But for the purpose of residential, those are on pause.
Okay. And then I noticed in the in the chart, in one of the graph charts, the it was mention of some some waivers or something that had to do with the Brightline possibility that that if they tied into the main California line project, then there could be an exemptions. I didn't quite understand it. Do you remember seeing that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would that come into you into play at all here?
It it potentially could. We would have to confirm a couple of things. Number one, we'd have to confirm that that project is one hundred percent planned to connect to the California High Speed Rail. I believe there's some some planned connections, but I'm not sure how solid those are or formal those planned connections are. It also would allow those exemptions for like maintenance facilities associated with that rail to be exempt from SEQA. However, it would have to be addressed in a larger E I R, although that E I R would would basically have to note that those were planned, but they wouldn't have to look at project-specific impacts for that maintenance facility where it may be located. So they could have a larger E I R for the rail that says we plan to have maintenance facilities in X, Y, Z without going into detail on those specific locations. And if it was called out as part of that overall E I R, then that exemption would be applicable in that case. So a lot of asterisks, so to speak, on what would make it applicable, but potentially, yes, that could be, that could work here for those like kind of maintenance facilities and things associated with Brightline West.
And so that could that could help that project a little bit if they comply, and it's could be some streamlining possibly. Okay. I have no other questions, so thank you for the update and the report. So that'll bring us to final reports from commissioners. Commissioner Marsh, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Anything, Commissioner Marshall?
Nope.
Nothing, okay. Any reports from staff?
Just one item, Mr. Chair. I know that we had one item this evening that was not being able to act on due to quorum. I would note that the planning commission rules do allow the planning commission to reconsider that item and adjourn a meeting to to another date to reconsider an item due to quorum. It does require a majority vote of the planning commission. So staff has identified September third, two thousand twenty-five at five P M as a viable date should the planning commission, the majority of the planning commission wish to adjourn this meeting and reconvene for the purposes of hearing the item that was unable to meet quorum.
Okay. So do I, do we need to get that consensus right now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So what Mr. Hadig has just said is that basically, do we want to have a special meeting before the next regularly scheduled one to hear this item that we were not able to hear this evening, right? Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I I make a motion to have to have the meeting.
A special meeting, right?
Yeah, I make a motion.
It would actually be a regular meeting, Chair Kurt.
It would be a reg- it would be a regular special meeting.
Not a spe- there's no special. It's just a regular meeting.
All the meetings are special. Come on.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have the meeting on September the third at five P M.
Yes, and a second. It's important.
I have a first by Commissioner Marsh and a second by Commissioner Marshall. I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshall?
Aye.
Chair Kurt?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we're able to do that. Yes, that is an important item for our community and do what we can. So with that, as Planning Commission Chairperson, I hereby adjourn this regular Planning Commission meeting to an adjourned regular meeting to be held on Wednesday, September third, two thousand and twenty-five at five P M at the City of Victorville Council Chambers for the purpose of considering agenda on number, item number two of today's agenda that was unable to be acted upon due to a lack of a quorum at this very special meeting. Thank you. Yeah, see you then on the third.